Okay.
Well, patriotic start.
Yes, sir.
I am ready when you are.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor.
I'll sleep better tonight.
Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for October 22, 2018, to begin at this hour. As usual, we will start our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag, and I'd ask that you please rise and join Counselor Bruce Cheney in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll note for the record that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowden?
Here.
Counselor Littman?
Present.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Engler?
I want to leave Counselor Hamel out there on an island by himself tonight.
That was a present, too.
Oh, he...
I want to get a unanimity as to here or present one of these nights.
It's out of respect for...
Let the record show that all six counselors are present at the meeting tonight, and a quorum has been established for this meeting. I'll also note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight by the city manager, Scott Myers. First order of business tonight is acceptance of minutes. We have two sets of minutes before us tonight. First up, we have a minutes of the special workshop meeting we held on October 1, and those minutes were submitted on October 5 to the council. No changes were suggested to the clerk, so unless there are any changes at this point in time, I'm going to declare the minutes of our special workshop meeting on October 1 to be accepted as presented by the clerk. Second up, we have the minutes of our regular meeting on October 11, 2018. Those minutes, I'm sorry, November 9, those minutes were distributed two days later on October 11. Again, no corrections have been suggested, so unless there are some corrections at this hour, I'm going to declare that the minutes to our October 9, 2018 minute meeting are approved as submitted by the clerk. No consent in action committee items tonight, and so we are already on to citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to address the council on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? Not on tonight's agenda. No one? All right. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is a public hearing on ordinance 2018-189-20-01, building sewer permits application fee. The actual suggested ordinance change is on page 36 of your packet. And before I open the hearing, I will note for the record that notice of this public hearing was made available in the October 11, 2018 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, at the community center, and at the Laconia Public Library. The, this particular, um... Change in city policy has to do with the, a permit and inspection fee for the sewer system, which would be $330 for a system development fee charged to new sewer service connection would be $800. So I'm going to open this public hearing at 7:04 PM and ask if there's anyone in our audience tonight who would like to address the city council with regard to the proposed change in building sewer permits. Anyone meet that definition? No? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing then at 7:04 PM also, and note for the record that we will take this matter up tonight under unfinished business. Next up, we have ordinance 2018-189-50-01, sewer charges. For the record, a notice of this public hearing was made available in the October 11, 2018 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the community center, and the Laconia Public Library. This has to do with, A, fixing the yearly permit fee per unit to be charged at $37 per quarter, $37.23 per quarter, as opposed to $34 per quarter. Secondly, to change the, the, um, per hundred cubic feet rate for water consumption as of February 1, 2019, from $475 per hundred cubic feet to $5.20 per hundred cubic feet. And thirdly, to change the fee to $495 billed semiannually, and that is for public sewer, but served by private water by either, by means of either a well or PUC-regulated water system. The ordinance itself change is printed on page 37 of your packet. So I'm going to open this public hearing at 7:06 PM and ask if there is anyone in attendance tonight who would like to address the council on the proposed changes to the sewer charges. No one? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing then at 7:06 PM, and note again for the record that we will be taking this matter up again tonight under unfinished business. Mayor's report, three things that I would like to mention quickly. One is to remind everyone that between now and the date of our next city council meeting is Election Day in New Hampshire, Tuesday, November 6. And the clerk can correct me on this, but I believe the polls are open seven to seven in all six Laconia wards, and obviously, we encourage all Laconia voters and residents who have not yet registered to vote and can register to vote at the polls on Election Day to vote between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM for everything from governor and member of Congress down through all the county offices, and we still have, we have school board elections, too, on the general election ballot this year. So please, everyone, make sure to get out and vote.
Is there a deadline on the absentee ballots coming up, or is that passed?
There's no deadline. They just need to be returned to us by Monday, November 5, by 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
And the last day to register to vote in City Hall is October 29, so next Monday.
But you can register at the polls?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Second thing I'd like to make note of is the state school issue front, the, uh, the next meeting of the Lake Shore Redevelopment Planning Commission is this Thursday afternoon at 1:00 PM at Lakes Region Community College. So they're, they're getting down to the heart of the matter now, I think, really, in terms of listening to and speaking with and reacting to their consultants that have been hired on this project. They have two different consultants working for them at this point in time, the commission does. One consulting firm is advising them on what is and is not feasible to be done with that property at this particular point in time, and the second one is, consulting firm is in charge of actually developing a master plan based on decisions they make. So that meeting, again, is Thursday at the Community College at 1:00 in the afternoon. And lastly, I would like, on behalf of all the counselors, to offer congratulations to our new fire chief, Kirk Biati. I don't see Kirk in the audience tonight. Laconia resident, and so, again, on behalf of all of us, I think, uh, offer him congratulations, not just to him, but also to his family. And as I said to him in a, in a private note, we're all very proud of him and everything that he has accomplished since moving to Laconia and joining our fire department as the first paramedic that the fire department ever had 20 years ago, and now he's the, the new chief. So with that, we'll move to committee reports. Any committee business tonight? Counselor Hamel?
Uh, yes, I'd like to schedule a meeting of the Land and Buildings Committee for the, our next council meeting, which I believe is November 12.
13.
Well, that's, uh...
What time?
Is it, uh, at 6:15?
6:15.
We meet on the Tuesday that week because Monday is the Veterans Day holiday celebrated. So it would be on Tuesday.
13th.
13th.
Okay. Forgot about that.
All right, Counselor Hamel makes a motion to...
That'll be on item 16D1, parking garage.
So Counselor Hamel moves to schedule a meeting of the Lands and Buildings Subcommittee for Tuesday, November 13 at 6:15 PM in this chamber to take up the matter of the downtown parking garage. Is there a second?
I'm going to be away that day. If Counselor Haynes is there, you guys can...
Well, I don't think it's any big yank. About the, uh, 26?
Yeah.
You good on 26?
Yes.
Schedule it for the 26.
Counselor Hamel amends his motion to say Monday, November 26 at 6:15 PM. All right. Is there a second to that motion? Counselor Haynes seconds that motion. If you're on that committee, you're...
Right.
Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes affirm that that meeting is scheduled. Any other committee business we need to talk about tonight? None? How about liaison reports? Any liaison reports tonight?
Well, I don't know if you got copies of the email that Dean from Planning sent out, but we're trying to schedule a meeting of the Master Plan Subcommittee, whatever you want to call it, and there have been...
Steering Committee.
Steering Committee. Well, I never can remember the name of that committee, but, uh, so we're trying to schedule that in the November timeframe. Um, I don't know what everybody's availability is, but that's what we're trying to do.
I used to see that meeting is scheduled, Counselor, before you and I are too old to remember the, why we were on that committee.
Oh, it's already too late for me.
Counselor Littman as well is on that committee, representing the city council. All right, any other liaison reports? Okay, citizens request to comment on current agenda items. This is the appropriate place on our agenda tonight to hear from anyone in our audience who wishes to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda. Anyone here meet that definition tonight? Is on tonight's agenda? No? Well, it's 8:13, 7:13 PM, Mr. Myers, and we are already to the city manager's report.
Well, I am not going to slow us down tonight, Mr. Mayor. It's not on my end, so thank you. We got two reports that are included in your agenda packet for this meeting. The first one is the monthly economic development report. I know I probably sound like a low, a broken record, but we continue to be at historic low unemployment numbers in really full capacity in our workforce right now. So locally and across the state, everything's rate around 2.7% or less. The inflation number that came out for the month of September dipped a little bit. We had been running a little bit hotter through the summer months, but inflation dropped down to 2.3%, so we're nine months of the way through the year for our consumer price index numbers, and we're running rate around 2.6% for the inflation. And again, that's one of the components that we use in our tax cap limitation, the amount to be raised by property taxes. And tomorrow morning, there's a nice event next door at the Bellknap Mill, being sponsored by the Bellknap Mill Society and Bellknap EDC, celebrating the manufacturing month. And, you know, Bellknap EDC in particular has done a good job over the past couple of years, really focusing on a lot of the advanced manufacturing opportunities that are here and trying to partner up some of our students, both in the high school and at the community college level, into some of these career opportunities that are very well-paying jobs. And as they like to put it, it's not your grandfather's manufacturing. Today's manufacturing is much more high-tech, but there was a breakfast to celebrate that tomorrow, and Commissioner Taylor Caswell from the State Business and Economic Affairs is a keynote speaker for that. On the other report you have in your packet, the Laconia Project Updates, we continue to crank ahead on projects. Trying to get this section of Pleasant Street paved on a non-school day has been put in the kibosh on a couple of rain events. One was going to be the Columbus Day Monday, and then the other one was going to be a week ago Saturday, and we had rain events both of those, so we're, we're looking for, we're looking for dates, and it's more than likely we're going to have to do it on a, on a school day, which was not the preferred choice, but we don't want to keep pushing it too much further, but we're very anxious to get that piece of work done. Couple of smaller projects that folks will see going on around town in the Messer Street area, the area of Dutil Oil, that's the one where we're upgrading the drainage system in that area, and we did that in conjunction with a lake drawdown this year because a discharge pipe does go in there, and we're punching some new pipe underneath the railroad track in that area. So we've worked with New Hampshire DOT, the rail division, and we're getting that work completed with the drawdown. We'll be back there in the spring to finalize some of the roadwork and the connections to it, if you will. We've gone out to bid on a couple of projects, one of them being the irrigation system at Memorial Park Softball Field. That was approved with the budget that we adopted in July. Guilford Well has been selected as the contractor, and they're looking to have the lion's share of the work done this fall, maybe a couple of minor punch list items in the spring, so that'll be ready to go for the spring softball season next year with the irrigation in place. We've also awarded a replacement sign and possibly two signs, if we can find some funding, for the gateway approaches of the one in McIntyre Circle we took down a few months ago. That was very aged, and we're potentially looking at the one...
Court Street.
Court Street coming in from Belmont would be the second one we're looking at if we can find the funds, but a nice design, nice sturdy sign that will withstand the elements and that type of stuff to it as well. And we are working on a couple sections of the River Walk right behind City Hall, down towards the back of the Benny Media Building, over the Pearlie Canal. That bridge was removed and, and new construction is going on, again, with the, with the river wall down there. We've pulled some large boulders out of there, again, in conjunction with the drawdown of the lake, and we're also working on the area behind Landmark and down towards Walgreens, and we're, we're being cognizant of the work that's happening at the Landmark Inn and trying not to invade their space, but working in conjunction with them. So a lot of those projects are going on now, and, you know, a little smaller and behind the scenes, other than some of the major road projects, but it'll have a nice impact in the city with the signs, the irrigation, and the River Walk extension. The mayor did mention the appointment of Chief Biati, and I just want to echo, I think Kirk would do a great job for the city, and I know he's excited to be in that position. One final thing I wanted to give you an update on, it was a project that was started in the Finance Department about a year ago, and we were working with Citizens Bank on something called a purchase card. And I'm not an expert on it, but a purchase card is a electronic form of payment to some larger vendors who will take a discount in the amount owed to them for services in exchange for getting their funds deposited in a much more timely fashion electronically. So we've worked with a couple of larger vendors, including Casella Waste, who we have a very large contract with, and also with EverSource, probably being the two big ones and a couple other smaller ones. The vendor has to agree to be a part of this program because they're taking a little bit of a discount on what's owed to them in exchange for the, the quick turnaround and the increased cash flow. And where it benefits the city and through Citizens Bank is the dollar amount that we run through this purchase card, we end up getting a rebate back on it. So for the 12 months ended, and I want to say this was started by Donna Woodman and John Gardner, they were the two lead people on this project. We just completed the first year in September, and we just received a check about a week or two ago for over $23,000, basically just for working on some electronic payments and working with a few of our larger vendors. So there's still opportunity to roll that out to additional vendors who want to be involved with it for the reasons that I've stated, but it's, it was a very nice rebate, and that's based on the dollar volume that we processed on the purchase card, and I want to say it was somewhere in the area of 1.4, 1.6 million we paid vendors over the last 12 months and, and did the rebate on that. So, um, again, another shout out to staff for just looking for ways to, you know, stretch our dollars and maximize our opportunities in the city.
That's a great idea.
So happy to take any questions anybody may have.
Questions or comments for the manager, Counselor Haynes?
Scott, do you know where the, with the electrical work on Court Street?
With the electrical work?
Yeah. The reason I'm asking is there's a number of streetlights that are still, that have disappeared.
I know we took some, I thought we had taken one or two down to store them away, but let me look to Wes to see if we have an answer, and if not, we can get you an answer.
We'll have to check, because I think EverSource has them.
Okay. I know they, they pulled a few down for construction reasons, but I think they're stored away, but we'll get you the exact number and when the anticipated reinstallation date is on that.
Okay.
Counselor Littman?
Leo Peachey Park, Native American sculpture. Any thought of what the plan is?
I know Kevin is here, and he can speak to it. I know the plan right now is, we, we don't feel that it's a safe structure to be standing going through the winter, and it's included in your project update here. So he's approached the Parks Commission about trying to take that down carefully. It's a tall structure, and it's in a very weakened state, but certainly in try to store it away somewhere, get it out of the winter elements, at least for this year, have an opportunity to discuss some options with creative folks on how it could be shored up, but I think, and again, we can certainly ask Kevin to come up. I think anecdotally, he's hearing of some of these in other states, that they're, they're all at that same age, and they're all coming into that disrepair, and it's just, there's not a lot of solid structure left on components of that. Do I have that right, Kevin? Or you want to add any, you want to add anything more to that?
So according to this, the Parks and Rec Commission voted to take it down.
That was the first step, is just for safety reasons, to take it down and store it and remove it, you know, through the winter, and then...
So when people see it's not there anymore, we want to...
Right. I'm going to, I'm going to issue a press, press release before anything's done. I'm going to be meeting with a contractor this week that, that is a tree removal service that we have contracted, contracted services to the city to get a sense on how and when we might be able to take care of this and also the cost associated with it. So it's, uh, you know, it's certainly an emotional thing for a lot of people, but I think we're at a point where safety concerns have now risen to the top and have become the priority. Certainly recognize, and I think there's some opportunity to, to look for a plan for it for the future. What that plan could be, I don't know. I've done some research on what other communities have done throughout the nation with this, with these sculptures. Many of them are starting to experience the same situations, if they haven't already, that we are. The same sculpt, the same, uh, same sculptor did these sculptures, so they're all kind of in that age where they're 30 to 40 years old, and they're, they need to come down. So certainly not an expert on this stuff, so I'm going to have to rely on others to, to give us guidance, but I think at some point, we may need to expend some funds to, at a minimum, remove it from the location, store it, and then formulate some kind of plan for what we might potentially do to preserve it or preserve a portion of it. And that's, that's what we're looking at right now.
Okay. Store it down and stored by, by winter?
That's our plan.
Just want to express that I just don't want it to be out of sight, out of mind. I think it's...
Right.
Does have sentimental, emotional value for people in the city, and just want to make sure it gets the respect it deserves.
Absolutely, yeah. In fact, I was reading one place, the statue was removed, I don't remember what community, what state it was. It was removed, and now they're looking for it, and they can't find where it went, so it, it disappeared, but I think we can...
This thing would be hard to lose.
I was going to say, I don't know how you lose it, but anyway, yes, understood.
Counselor Hamel?
Yeah. Armin and I were the ones that kind of took care of that for quite a long time. We painted it and that kind of stuff. And he and I, a couple of years ago, went over there because the, the gentleman that made it asked for test borings to see what kind of, uh, how solid it was. And so we went there, and we bored in the backside, small holes about every two feet. And in that whole structure, there's only maybe two inches of very pulpy wood. It's not even, it's like sawdust. So there's, there's not a lot of meat in that whole thing. The base of it is pretty well gone. I'd be, tell you the truth, I'd be surprised if they, when they try and take that out, if it, if it survives, but at least we can try.
Right, and I think we need to...
There's rods that go up into it that are, I think they're around two to three feet high. I think they're three feet that go into the base of that, so when you tug on it, I don't know what's going to happen, but just so you'll kind of know.
Counselor Bowden?
Not suggesting that we shouldn't do it, but do we have any idea about what it will cost, or are we still assessing that?
To tear it down?
Yeah.
I mean, to, I shouldn't say tear it down. To lift it off, yes.
And store it respectfully.
Well, I can say one community who had it removed with a crane was between $5,000 and $10,000 to do that process. I'm not sure if that, that's just based on what another community incurred in cost to do that.
And... So have, have, have we... I'm trying to think of the diplomatic way of putting this. Has, has the Parks and Rec Commission or anyone else made any kind of a significant effort to determine what the community's attachment to this monument is?
I mean, I don't think any...
How deep and broad feelings?
Well, I think we did, we did look to try to seek some funds for donations to try to renovate it, going back almost a year and a half ago. I can tell you there hasn't been a strong response, although I'll admit Parks and Rec hasn't done a strong fundraising campaign for it either. You know, you get kind of mixed, mixed feelings about it. I've heard some people that say, you know, they don't, it doesn't have a lot of value to them. I've heard others that have an attachment to it, and I have an attachment to it because I remember as a kid going over there and watching him carve it, so, but I think when safety comes into play, I think that becomes a priority. Now, I do not know, I do not know what the Native American community feels about it. I haven't reached out to them, mainly because I don't know if I, it's the right thing to put them in the middle of it, but I could certainly reach out to them and get, get a sense on how they feel.
Counselor Hosmer?
Thank you. If, if the estimate is $5,000 to $10,000, I'm not saying that's a firm estimate, but that's what it costs to move this sculpture, and we have an inclination that maybe what, it's rotted internally. I guess my first question would be, how, absent the fundraising, how would we expect to pay for it? Second of all, are we all convinced that it's worth paying that amount of money in light of the fact that it may not make it through this removal process?
Right, and I think there's a risk we'll take as far as how much, or how much, or if it would survive the removal, as far as where the funding would come from. I'd sit down the city manager to determine if that would be in operating funds, something to come out of Parks and Recreation budget, not a specific line item, but we could do that, or see if there's other potential funds that could be transferred in to, to cover that cost. There's going to be a risk associated with it, no question about it, but I, I think, personally, I think it's worth trying to remove it and at least save as much as we can of it. Did I answer that question? Your questions? Okay.
Well, I guess that the, my question would be in a cost-benefit analysis. What would it cost to just remove it, or what would it cost to take it down and try to preserve it and restore it? That's just a cost-benefit analysis? I'm not suggesting I'm in favor of one or the other, but...
Right. I will, I can get pricing for both.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Bowden, I'm sorry.
Not for this, for something else. I'm just checking on the Messer Street project. We, I see them down there working now. Do we anticipate to get the first phase of that project done while, this year, while the water is down?
Absolutely, yes. We're going to get the connection from, from the lake up under the railroad tracks, is my understanding, and then we'll tie in the street portion of it next spring.
So DOT and everybody else is on board with this?
Oh, yeah, we've, we've been working with them for two years now to time it for this fall, so that component will be done, and will be done with, under the railway and at the lake shore this fall. The connections that we control are not around somebody else's schedule will take place next spring.
Okay.
Anything else for the manager? All right, we're on to new business. First item of new business. All right, we're on to new business, first item of new business on page twenty-nine of your packet, and that has to do with a request to light up Laconia. Councilor Bowles, I understand this is your initiative?
It is.
You have it before, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was contacted by members of the Celebrate Laconia folks who are putting a lot of effort into the holiday parade occurring on November twenty-fifth, and I thought that this would be an opportunity, and I think that thought was shared by Celebrate Laconia, this would be an opportunity to do something in downtown Laconia, possibly in Lakeport and possibly the Weers. So, I went to a meeting with Celebrate Laconia a couple of weeks ago, and got some general figures for the lights that we traditionally had in, in downtown Laconia around the trees, for a new garland that would cross the street at the intersection of Pleasant Street and An estimate or a hope that we could put up a Christmas tree that's already got a fixture there for it at the intersection of Pleasant and Main, and some kind of an update with the Parks and Rack in terms of the downtown park and gazebo, if we could do anything there. The figures that I've gotten from Celebrate Laconia vary, not significantly, but enough so that you should know about it. Some figures come in for twelve hundred dollars for the garland and another five hundred or twelve hundred dollars for the downtown lights. Other figures come in at a little more expensive, around twenty-three hundred dollars for that. I got a call late today from Patrick Wood, who thinks that he may be able to locate some of the lights that were used in the past. We had thought that they were all gone, but apparently they may still be around, which would be some savings for the project. My interest is simply not to be in the position that we were in last year when downtown looked like Grinchville, and put up some lights and at a fairly modest cost. So, I put together some figures for thirty-five hundred dollars for this request. It would address the downtown. If extra funds were available, there's an eight hundred dollar request from the Lakeport Association to spruce up their display. I just got an email from Beth Santusi, who was the chairman of Celebrate Laconia, that the Weers wasn't able to put together a proposal, but we could do something independently, if in fact there were any money left over, just put up garlands or wreaths on the telephone poles out there or along the boardwalk or something like that. The intent would be not to spend more than thirty-five hundred dollars, hopefully you spend less. They, Celebrate Laconia is looking into the prices and getting the stuff done, and we would anticipate, if this is approved, that when we do the holiday parade and we light up the tree downtown, that we light up the rest of Laconia. So, that's, that's it in a nutshell. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but the figures are vague, so I've come in, I think, a little high, just to make sure that we can cover this project. And again, I don't want to see any letters to the Laconia Daily Sun this year that said, what happened to the lights downtown? Where's the holiday spirit for the downtown Laconia? So, that's my goal. Thank you.
Questions for Councilor Bowles or comments? Councilor Hamel?
Not so much for David, but Scott, could we, is it possible to use funds from the TIF accounts for that? Because I know the downtown and Lakeport have some, the Weers doesn't have any, because they're paying down the loan, but they also have the money that they captured from Bike Week in the parking lot there, and they could spend some of that towards that. I just wondered about the TIF accounts.
Yeah, the only, the only TIF account that's got some significant money is the, is the downtown one, but I know we've got some potential, you know, debt repayment fairly aggressively for the Colonial project. We've committed six hundred thousand in cash and then repaying an additional one hundred and fifty thousand a year for four years back to that, so that kind of tightens up that cash flow. If, if the council approves this for thirty-five hundred, I think I can piece together a couple of the small areas and make it happen within the operating budget.
Is that what you mean by designated funds? I was wondering what that means.
There wasn't a specific line item in there, so I will identify some areas within the budget that we can make this happen with, once we get the numbers finalized.
My conversations with Scott were very informal. Can we afford thirty-five hundred dollars? We can get it somewhere? And thank you, Scott. That's about...
So, you don't mean that, that there's something in the budget that calls for thirty-five hundred dollars for holiday lights or something?
No, we just, within the existing dollars that were approved in the budget, I will identify a couple of line items, maybe one line item that we can expend these dollars for, for a different purpose.
So, what, you mentioned something about last year that you're trying to avoid? What happened last year?
What happened last year? What happened last year was that the downtown decorations had traditionally been handled by the Downtown Association, the Main Street Association, and they decided that they couldn't do it last year. They didn't tell anybody that they weren't going to do it last year, so by the time Thanksgiving had come and gone, there was nothing downtown. If you walk downtown between Thanksgiving and Christmas, there were no lights up. There were no lights on the trees, which we traditionally had.
So, where are the lights that the cable company used to put up downtown?
Those came from the Main Street Association and Metro Cass lent in their man-hours to help string them up. They're trying to, Celebrate Laconia is now trying to coordinate, and Scott may be part of this effort, but coordinate with either EverSource or Atlantic Broad, broadband...
So, do they have those lights still? They're stored somewhere?
We think we're looking at starting relatively brand-new here.
Yeah.
What happened to the lights?
Well, that's the question of the day. When I went to, when I went to the meeting, the, the answer was, well, we just bought those lights every year and then sort of got rid of them, so we don't have any lights. And I said, well, okay, we'll, we'll deal with that. I got a call from Patrick Wood today, who said, we may have some lights, which we do. If we do, it'll save us some money, assuming that they're adequate, but I'm looking at, the figure that I'm putting in would cover new lights for the downtown. If we can get all the lights that are, look good, we're fine, but thirty-five hundred dollar figure...
Who puts up the light at Veteran Square, the tree? Parks and Rec?
City staff does, and we just started that maybe two years ago, Kevin? Two years ago, where we had a tree donated from a local family or person in the region, and we'll go out there with, with staff vehicle and Parks and Rec crew works with Public Works crew and go out and get it and bring it in. And it's a more manageable tree, because the, the original tree was just so unwieldy and...
Which everybody hated anyway.
Challenging, so...
Not everybody.
But, but again, there was some sentiment, sentimental attachment to, to that tree, so we've, similar to the, to the Native American sculpture, we've gotta be careful here. So, we've got a more manageable tree that's cut live and it's, it's, you know, set up...
So, are we doing that again this year?
We'll be doing that again this year, and that tree will be, will be lit, I believe, at the conclusion of the holiday parade is when that tree will be lit.
So, you want two trees?
I want a tree at Pleasant Street and Main and a tree down in Veteran Square, yeah.
When we did the, when we did the downtown improvements at the loop coming on Pleasant to Main, we installed a, so it's near where the Salvation Army and Kettle usually gets placed, we installed a permanent tree holder type of thing in there into the sidewalk, so it's there, doesn't have to go on a stand, doesn't need whatever, so there's an opportunity for a tree there. And there's also a very nice tree coming in, in Stewart Park, that's, that's lit up coming in, so we've got trees coming, coming through, I think, Council...
Who's paying for that one?
That's a live tree that has not gotten too unwieldy yet, so that one is existing.
Oh, it's, it's a real tree in the ground?
It's a living tree, yes.
And Parks and Rec's gonna decorate that?
I typically have white lights on that one, I believe.
White lights. All right, what's the will of the council here?
David, if I may, I think this is a great idea. I think it's not only great for the spirit of the city, but it's also, I think it supports the downtown business community as well, when we want people to come down and shop locally. You know, the idea that you've got a tree and you've got some lights, I think that adds to the spirit, and, and my hunch is that to be, they'd be really thankful of that too, so, here, here.
Would you like to make this motion?
I would love to make this motion, but, but before I get to the motion...
All right.
If, when you're looking for funds for, to, to take care of this, this request, if there are anything, if there's anything extra, naturally, we'd like to include the Weers somehow here and tie the city all into the Christmas spirit, so...
Well, I've, I've always been in favor of including the Weers. They never really do anything up at the Weers during the Christmas season, and if there's funds that we can identify that's gonna help make the Weers part of the spirit of the holiday season, I'll use my words carefully, that would be great too. I did get an email from Beth saying that they couldn't really get together a proposal. I treated that as, they don't have a solid figure to give us, not as, we don't want to do anything.
So, Councilor, have you, could you read this motion real quickly, just to yourself, and make sure it's what, says what you want it to say?
It does. I've read that motion.
Because the Weers is in there specifically.
I, I, I understand that, and I want to keep it...
Nothing about Lakeport in here.
I, I understand that. I think we can be, I think we can move back and forth on this fairly easily with the motion as it stands, in terms of extra funds for Lakeports or something for the Weers, or, I'm just trying to give you a, a general ballpark of what we want to do. I don't think the motion has to be specific as to each designated area, it's the spirit of light up Laconia.
Are the downtown business, downtown business organization gonna contribute anything to this at all?
The answer to that is, I don't know, but I'm not betting on it and I'm not counting on it. I'm looking to this council to make sure that we have a festive spirit in the city of Laconia for the two thousand and eighteen holiday season.
I'd like to bring this motion.
All right. So, Councilor Hosmer moves to approve the request to use thirty-five hundred dollars from existing budgeted city funds. Can we just shorten that to say to provide holiday lights for downtown Laconia and possibly also for Lakeport Square and Lakeside Avenue? Is that fair?
That's great, yes.
Is that okay with you?
That's fine with me.
All right, so a total of thirty-five hundred dollars. All right, is there a second for that? Councilor Cheney seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, motion carries.
Well, there's no Grinch at the council table tonight.
It was touch and go there for a minute, though.
There's still time.
I'm counting on you, Councilor Cheney.
It was all due to the diplomatic way you answered that question. Okay, we're on to item B, and that is to amend the general fund appropriations, appropriations for two thousand, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. This is on page thirty-one of your packet, and I guess we should look to the city manager for an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, in putting together the general fund appropriation for the budget for fiscal year nineteen, the, the figure that was included in there included four point four five eight million, which was the state education portion, and that should not have been included in that final number, so the resolution said we were raising forty-four million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand and some change. When you back out the, the state education portion, the amount is the forty thousand two twenty-seven three forty-four, that actually was listed as the line item in the budget book on page three. Just the state education piece got rolled into it, so this has no impact on anything that was approved, no impact on the tax cap, no impact on the tax rate, it's just doing a little housekeeping, so when we go to Department of Revenue Administration later on in November to set the tax rate, the resolution on the amount to be raised by taxes matches up with what we're seeking to raise by taxes.
Okay, any questions before we get to making this motion? All right, a motion being ordered then to adopt amended resolution two thousand and eighteen dash fifteen, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eighteen, terminating June thirty, two thousand and nineteen. Be it resolved that the following itemized appropriations be made for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and eighteen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand and nineteen, from the general fund. Grand total, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen appropriation, sixty-nine million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars, less total revenues of twenty-nine million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars, leaving a balance to be raised by taxes of forty million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and forty-four dollars. Someone make that motion, please? Councilor Hamel, is there a second? Councilor Bowles seconds the motion. Any discussion of adopting this amended resolution?
Sorry.
All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we are on to item C, and this is with regard to proposed resolution two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-four regarding the approval of Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse Road as emergency lanes with a limited scope of maintenance. We've talked about this at recent meetings. We have the resolution itself on page thirty-four of your packet tonight, and we need to pass three resolutions, three, three motions, which will be, include the first reading of this change and the scheduling of a public hearing. Any questions or comments before we get to making those motions?
I'm gonna raise the same type of issue that I raised before. Here's my concern, I, I don't want anybody confused, I'm gonna support this proposal at this time. There may come a time when that will change. We're not finally dug in here with respect to how we, how we do this, but here's my concerns, and we've got a little filler, thanks to the city manager and the fire, and the fire department with respect to the needs for the emergency lane, but I, I want us to be careful, because we're gonna be dealing with a lot of emergency lanes designations, we're gonna be dealing with a lot of as-is roads designations over the course, the rest of the term of this council. And as the proposal came forward, and I'm not faulting anybody, but as the proposal came forward first, we really only heard from the applicant, so I want to make sure that when we deal with Boathouse Road, that we've got the necessary items that would support emergency lane designations, because I, I want you to remember, we don't know how many roads haven't been plowed in the past, and we, we don't have an idea. We've just got ballparks on how many roads are gonna be affected, and if we do this on the, on just the recommendation of the applicant, we're gonna put ourselves in a position where we're dealing with folks who have never had their road plowed before and are coming in with emergency, emergency lane requests, just based upon their request to do so. So, I want to, I, I think it's important for the council, when we consider these requests, to have a real factual basis that is just not applicant-oriented, but comes from our departments, DPW, Fire Department, Police Department, whatever, whatever we need, even the state can get involved if they want to, I don't care, but that we have some kind of real basis to declare a particular road an emergency lane, so that we're not dealing with applicants in the future who say, well, you did this for them, why can't you do this for me? And I think that that's what I want to be cautious about, again. I'm not in opposition to this on a, at this time, on this basis, I'm gonna support moving this to a public hearing. I'm just, want to reiterate my concerns about how we go about emergency lane designations in the future, given what we're gonna be dealing with for those kinds of requests and for as-is roads as we move forward. So, I'm just advocating a little caution here.
Told you there was time for a Grinch to show up.
I want you to know that I love Councilor Cheney.
Councilman Lippman?
I'd like to make the motion to put this to a public hearing, so we can take the input that's...
We, we got two motions before we need, before we get to a public hearing, but I'll, I'll let you make that motion when we get to it. First up, we need a... First up, we need a motion on the floor to waive reading of resolution number thirty-four in its entirety and to read by title only. Motion made by Councilor Hosmer, second by Councilor Hamel. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Next up is to approve resolution thirty-four on first reading relative to designating Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse Road as emergency lanes with a limited scope of winter maintenance. Council Ham, Ham, Councilor Hosmer makes that motion, seconded by Councilor Hamel. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution thirty-four on first reading, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Now, Councilor, uh, Lippman moves to schedule a public hearing on resolution thirty-four relative to designating Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse Road as emergency lanes with a limited scope of maintenance to only include winter maintenance in order to gather public. Wait a minute. The motion that was drafted that's in front of me does not say when. I assume it's at our next meeting.
Should say November thirteenth during the regular city council meeting.
All right. Councilor Lippman moves to schedule a public hearing for resolution thirty-four relative to designating Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse Road as emergency lanes with a limited scope of maintenance to only include winter maintenance in order to gather public input, with said public hearing to be held during the regular city council meeting on Tuesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Is there a second? Councilor Hosmer seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. All right. That is it for new business, unfinished business. We have, the first two items have to do with the sewer fee changes. So first up is, uh, a final reading of ordinance two thousand and eighteen, one eighty-nine, twenty dash zero one. This is the application fee where the permit and inspection, inspection fee would be three hundred and thirty dollars and a system development fee charged to new sewer, sewer service connections would be eight hundred dollars effective. When?
February, right?
February of two thousand and eight.
Say here.
February nineteen.
Uh, actually those, this particular one, because it's not tied to consumption, will take effect upon its passage. The, the next one we're dealing with deals with consumption, which can be three months out, and that's why we did that with February first.
Take effect immediately.
Yes.
Upon passage.
Yes.
And that's a building sewer.
Now, we don't need all these motions tonight, right? This is simply.
Uh, you, you want to, yes, you do want to, uh, you're going to take those three motions. You're going to do it by title only. You're going to move the second reading and you're going to move to approve it.
Okay, so there's two different parts that each need a separate motion.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments before we get to making this series of motions here?
I, I gotta be a Grinch again, so.
Councilor Bowns.
Uh, this relates to.
Can we take back the previous one?
Yes, yes. Henry, you can shoot me after the meeting. I, I gave you permission. Um, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to the building sewer permits, um, per se, and I, I understand the need for it. These, this is a large increase in one fell swoop. And I'm just suggesting that in terms of the future, um, that we can deal with them more incrementally so that we're not dealing with a large increase all at once. That's, that's just my suggestion. I'm not going to oppose this motion because I know we need it. We, um, but I think there's a better approach in terms of how we go about, because there are going to be future increases. Uh, we know that. Uh, there's a better, there's a better approach in terms of taking an incremental, uh, step to it. So it's not just one fell swoop.
Councilor Lippman?
Just so you're not confused, this is because seventy-five dollars doesn't cover the cost of what we're doing now. So the rate payers are subsidizing basically new, new hookups. So what we're basically trying to do is get this fee calibrated. I think what you were referring to is the next motion that we're going to take up, which is related to the consumption rate on water, which we asked the, um, manager and, and Public Works to come back with a financing plan so that the, the costs of infrastructure improvements could be spread over a longer life so that people who are new later on would be able to share in the cost and it isn't all front-loaded, similar to what we did with the schools, um, in terms of financing them and, and the road projects is another example. So I just want to make sure we're not confusing the public.
Well, um, I appreciate that. Um, my comments go to both, but, um.
This is one, this is a one-time thing, so I don't know why you're making it, um, an issue when it's not one. It's just trying to recover the cost.
Rates is the next one. This one is hook-up fees.
I, I think I understand your viewpoint. I'm, I'm just going to stick with my comments and that would be that.
All right, can we get to motions? All right. First motion that would be in order would be to waive a reading of ordinance one eighty-nine dash twenty dash zero one, uh, by title only. Someone care to make that motion? Councilor Cheney, second by Councilor Bowns. All those in favor, reading by title only, please raise a hand. Thank you. Six votes in affirmative, motion carries unanimously. Sec up, second up, a motion to approve on second reading ordinance one eighty-nine dash twenty dash zero one, an ordinance amending chapter one eighty-nine, building sewer permits, application fee would be in order. Someone, Councilor Cheney, second by Councilor Bowns. Any discussion? Favor of approving the ordinance change on second reading, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Finally, a motion to approve ordinance one eighty-nine dash twenty dash zero one relative to building sewer permits, application fee.
We already did that one.
That's the exact same language.
One's to move the second reading and then the final one is to approve. So you need a first reading, a second reading, and then the approval.
So it takes three readings to pass this?
You need to have a second reading and then a vote, so this third one is a vote.
We've already, we, haven't we done the second reading?
You just did the second reading with the motion you just passed, and now here's the vote.
Sure about that? That's because it's an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, so we've passed ordinance one eighty-nine dash twenty dash zero one on first reading. We've had a public hearing. We've passed it on a second reading. And now we're going to pass it for a third time on final reading, I guess. And Councilor Ha, Councilor Hamel makes that motion. Councilor Haynes seconds that motion. All right, all those in favor of finally and finally approving resolution ordinance change twenty, one eighty-nine dash twenty dash zero one, please raise a hand. Thank you. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Okay. So that's effective now. All right. Okay, we're on to the second part. This has to do with the, uh, service fees for sewer, and that resolution is one eighty-nine dash fifty dash zero one. And it is on page thirty-nine and forty of your packet. And again, we have three readings of this. So this is the one where we're changing the quarterly fee effective of February one from thirty-four dollars to thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents per quarter. And chasing, changing the water consumption charge again as of February one of next year from four seventy-five per hundred cubic feet of water used to five dollars and twenty cents per hundred cubic feet of water used. Any questions or comments before we get to these three motions?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, that'll be for the billing cycle beginning February one. So it's actually based on usage that would start November first, and that would have November, December, January, and then hit the quarterly bill, quarterly billing that goes out on or after February first.
Was this the, was this?
So you're actually, it's based on water consumed starting November one?
Correct, so we said this is.
Get the bill for that until February.
Right, so this is for the bills dated on or after February one, but it's for consumption beginning November one.
Was this the, uh, forty dollars that we passed at the last meeting of the meeting?
Yes, this is the equivalent of that, yes.
All right, so first up would be a motion to waive reading of ordinance one eighty-nine dash fifty dash zero one and to read by title only. Councilor Bowns makes that motion. Councilor Cheney seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Next up is to approve the ordinance one eighty-nine dash fifty dash zero one on second reading. Councilor Cheney makes that motion, seconded by Councilor Hosmer. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving it on second reading, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. And finally, to adopt resolution one eighty-nine dash fifty dash zero one. That motion, Councilor Bowns, seconded by Councilor Cheney. Any discussion? All those in favor of final adoption, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. All right, lastly.
Can we, um, ask the manager, I'm sorry, I'd like to ask the manager in terms of the longer range plan, when you might come forward with that?
Probably have that for you in the next thirty days.
Thank you.
Talking about options available in terms of the rest of the hike that was asked for by Public Works.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we are on to proposed city policy on limited winter maintenance on emergency lanes. And you have that on page forty-one of your packet. And, uh, Mr. Myers, who's going to speak to this tonight?
I'll speak to it, and we've got, uh, Wes Anderson, Public Works Director, who can chime in. But this is basically, um, as, uh, Councilor Hosmer and Councilor Cheney were involved with the folks on Pendleton Road and Boathouse Road, kind of a hybrid of an emergency lane just with the limited winter maintenance. Um, that, uh, homeowners association down there had always taken care of the other maintenance on the roads. They're just looking to have the city continue the winter plowing and sanding, which is all that it had, had historically done on Pendleton Road and had not done on Boathouse Road, but the request is to include both. So we've got together a policy that basically says the city would treat, uh, emergency lanes with a limited winter maintenance scope of work, uh, as we do on paved roads, uh, that we would treat with salt and do the plowing at that same, uh, level. And for gravel roads, that we would, uh, plow and treat with sand at the same standards that we're currently doing. It outlines that the homeowners association is responsible for making clear, uh, making sure that vegetation is clear from the roads so that our trucks can get down there, that if there is a, uh, heavy snow accumulation and snow needs to be hauled off and removed so we can continue to plow the area, that would be on the association. And that they're going to continue to do whatever maintenance to the road during the non-winter months to keep those roads passable for city vehicles of all types. So this just sets the policy in place as to what the expectations are from both sides for a limited scope of winter maintenance, emergency lane designation.
Questions or comments before we get to motions? Any? Okay, a motion be in order to approve the proposed policy on maintenance standards for limited winter maintenance of emergency lanes as presented. Someone care to make that motion? Councilor Cheney, seconded by Councilor Bowns. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. That ends our unfinished business for tonight. And we are to council comments. Anyone? Only once. Not even Councilor Cheney tonight?
Uh, you know, I.
Disappointed here. All right, uh, we have no need for a non-public session tonight that I'm aware of. Is that correct, Mr. Myers?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
So unless there's any objection, uh, any other business come before this meeting, I want to declare the meeting adjourned at eight oh four P M.
You almost hit it on the nose.